Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
If you'll please rise with me and do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will start with our first presentation, which is going to be by the Oceanside Longboard Surfing Club. Steve, if you want to get up and...
We'd like to see if we can bring these plaques over to you while we're doing it, okay guys? And Bing's on top of them.
Mayor Weiss and esteemed council members, my name is Bing Cosby, president of the Oceanside Longboard Surfing Club here to offer appreciation and thanks for partnering with our community organization. Last summer, we had our 34th annual event that went off without a hitch. Thanks a lot to Patrick Young with Special Events. It was our first time teaming up with the Oceanside Fire Department to honor all our first responders, and this, we're hoping, will continue. We know it will. And also, we're brainstorming on city staff events and divisions for next year at the Oceanside Pier. Little history, the Oceanside Surfing Club started in the 50s with the likes of the lifeguards like Truex, the Ticos, the LJ Richards, and Phil Edwards of the world. And we're evolving to what we are now, which is families, community members. I met my wife in the club 15 years ago. Our mission is to promote and foster the amateur sport of surfing with emphasis on good sportsmanship, public image of surfing community, and supporting the conservation of all coastal environment. And we look forward to the continued support from the city departments and council, and invite feedback on how we can help and grow and fit the needs of our growing beach city in Oceanside. We want to offer sincere thank you for everything you've done for us last 35 years. Thank you.
And at this time, if I could have Emerald from the chamber come down with our business spotlight.
So on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber, I'd like to recognize Two Guys Grilling as the Member of the Month for October. You guys want to come on up? David joined the Chamber last year. David joined the Chamber last year, hoping to get more involved in the Oceanside community and to expand his network, working with local nonprofits. Since he's joined, David's been a very active member of our Chamber, helping us raise over $1,400 at this year's relay for the American Cancer Society. He's catered several of our special events, bringing them to a higher scale than ever before. He now serves as the executive chef at the Veterans Association of North County here in Oceanside. David, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. It was actually Emerald Lowe who recruited me to, and Two Guys Grilling, to join the organization. Two Guys Grilling is 18 years old. We have been all over California and the world. The farthest we've gone for an event was Ramstein, Germany. Largest one we've done is 9,000 people. Smallest was two. If you have any catering needs, please give us a call. I'd like to introduce David Varcardipone and Nucky Darby. David is a United States Navy veteran. He also serves in the Coast Guard Reserve. Nucky is a nine-year United States Marine Corps veteran. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session to discuss the following items. Item one, conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Fire Management Association, the management employees of the city of Oceanside, and the Oceanside Police Officers Association. There's no action to report on item one. Item two, council met to discuss real property terms and conditions involving the El Corazon property, APN 16208251. Negotiating parties are the city of Oceanside and Sudbury Development Incorporated and SoCal SCLP. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property. Council met did give direction, there's no action, under the Brown Act to report.
Thank you. We'll go to our consent calendar, which are items four through 14.
Mayor Weiss, item 13 was pulled.
Thank you.
Move approval for ballots.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes. 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 It's pulled. It's coming next.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Let's go to item 13. Do you have speakers on 13?
Yes.
Let's go to the speakers.
Mayor, I pulled it because I wanted to hear Marjorie tell us about HEEP, the HEEP portion of it. So, that was my reason.
So, we'll hear from staff and then go to the speakers.
Right, and I had wanted to pull it too, so... Marjorie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, Marjorie Pierce, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. This evening, staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution declaring an emergency shelter crisis in the city of Oceanside. And the reason that staff is recommending this is because the state has established a fund of money, and in order to apply for it, well, three things. One, in order for a city to apply for it directly from the state, you have to be a city of 330,000 people or more, or your local continuum of care, which in our cases, the regional task force on the homeless can apply for funds, and then we can be subrecipient of the COC. But the only way that the city can apply directly for funds to the COC is if they declare this emergency crisis and adopt the resolution. If the city council decides to adopt this resolution, city staff has some ideas of where we might want to apply for funds. This has to be a housing-first model type of a situation. So, we would be looking at probably first and foremost is improving, or not actually improving, that's a wrong word, but extending our homeless outreach team by adding two more officers and social, I mean, social workers to that team. The homeless outreach team has been very effective in working and establishing relationships with the homeless people, particularly in the downtown area, and providing resources and working directly with the housing department in getting Section 8 vouchers for veterans and chronically homeless individuals to get them off the street. So, there may be other nonprofits in the city that want to also receive funding through the HEEP program. They would have to apply directly to the COC for those funds. The COC has been very clear that they do not want the city to be an intermediary, that they want to contract directly because they want the funds expended within the timetable, which I believe have to be expended by June of 2021. I should have looked at that date more closely. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can for you. Other things that we might want to use the funds for besides additional hot team officers and social workers is to establish a landlord incentive program. Right now, it's very difficult for people to find housing. We already, the council already approved a program, incentive program for landlords to homeless veterans, and we might want to extend that to an incentive program for the chronically homeless individuals. In addition, we might want to look at getting an extra PERC team, which is the Psychological Evaluation Team, if there would be a clinical social worker from the county to attach to that program. And then, really, I think what a huge focus of the HEEP program is going to be for diversion programs. We have diversion programs right now, and they've been successful. Diversion programs include reunification-type programs. It might be diverting someone from becoming homeless by providing down payment, or deposit down payment for them, or utility down payment, or getting somebody by a couple of months so that they can continue to live where they're living. In addition, I know that some of you might be surprised to hear me, see me tonight. I was at a training, and needing to come back tonight, I asked the trainer if he would alter his training schedule because there was a program that I was particularly interested in getting trained on, because it has been since 1992, and program changes since I was originally trained on the program. And he wasn't able to alter the program, but last night, I was able to stay late and get a private tutoring, training with him. And we will be able to use some of our home funds, which the council already approved to use as tenant-based rental assistance, to do some bridge housing. Those funds can also be used for security deposits and utility deposits. And staff will be actually developing the program and bringing it to the Housing Commission, hopefully in November, and then to the council in December. And that will also help provide housing opportunities for our homeless population.
Mayor, I just, clarification on how much money the HEEP dollars are. I had seen one that said in our staff, backup, it says 18.8 million for the county, but I'd heard more along the lines of 6 million.
Well, the RFP has not come out yet, so we're not exactly sure, but there was an indication that there may be about $7 million available directly for cities to apply for, and then nonprofits in the county would be able to apply. And we also, by the way, the city of San Diego is part of the COC, and while they received several million dollars directly, they too are eligible to apply for these funds. So, we'll need to put together a competitive application.
Okay. If we can just hear the speaker, then that's, is there more than one? Okay, there's more than one.
The first two speakers are Joe Corbett and Kent Rundle.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, good afternoon. Joe Corbett from Wantis View Estates HOA, and member of Take Back Oceanside. Up front, I want to be clear that I'm absolutely in favor of helping those who need help. In order to help those who need it, they have to be willing to accept the help. There are many success stories of local philanthropic organizations and church groups that have done well to help both individuals struggling families who need a leg up. However, the people that have invaded the San Luis Rey River, Tulley Canyon, and now our airport neighborhoods are largely not the ones who desire any help. Most are felons hiding from warrants, ex-cons, transients, drug addicts, vagrants, prostitutes, and mentally ill, who are negatively impacting our lives daily. We are now pleading with the city to take action, our very real concerns for our security, safety, quality of life, and preservation of our property values. Our patience has run out. We cannot let the SLR in the surrounding areas, or any part of Oceanside, degrade into what happened on the Santa Ana Riverbed. We want them out of the San Luis Rey River and Tulley Canyon now. They don't want help, they go away, or they go back to wherever they came from. The time has come for the city to take meaningful steps to unravel the tangled legal mess of who has authority over the SLR, and then to start swiftly working to create humane and municipal laws and ordinances that empower police to protect us law-abiding citizens, not the lawless. We need recent, we noticed recent mowing that started south of Fusot Road. We hope it continues down I-5 towards the underpass to include Tulley Canyon. Tulley Canyon is directly astride of Wantis View Estates HOA, and has become infested with transients again. We would like the city to mow and clear Tulley Canyon immediately as it poses the largest threat to our homes, crime aside. Transients make campfires, use propane, smoke cigarettes, crack, whatever else they can. It's not unreasonable for us to be overly concerned about fire threatening our homes. Despite the recent rain, this threat of fire is compounded with the recent and forthcoming Santa Ana winds, which we had today. As it becomes colder and windier, we expect those fires to increase the threat as transients try to keep warm in the colder months. To me, it's completely and utterly ridiculous that evicting these transients could have any adverse legal consequences when and done in the name of protection for the community and the environment. What rights do they have to ruin our quality of life, trash the environment, and crush our property values? Oceanside has done more than any other north county city to reach out a hand to those who need it. Now that hand's being bitten off a finger at a time. It's hard to hear myself say this, but I do not support any more services or shelters in Oceanside until nearby cities start doing their share of the heavy lifting by dumping their transients off in Oceanside, creating even greater need for services. My Irish grandmother had a saying, "That some are more to be pitied than scorn." I can't imitate her accent. The people who are dwelling in the SLR in Tulley Canyon are largely the variety that should be scorned. Get them out now, please.
Honorable Mayor, city council, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm a 50-year San Diego native. I've been in Oceanside for 10 years. I've worked in Orange County for the last 15 years, right next to the Santa Ana Riverbed. On a daily basis, I work with the homeless and transients. I see what works, what doesn't work, what doesn't work. I'm in the mindset of the homeless people and the transients. Nonenforcement not only does not work, it promotes this lifestyle. I've seen the results firsthand on a daily basis. Nonenforcement puts a strain on just my city by 30%, and we've got these numbers documented in calls related to transients in the Santa Ana Riverbed. We need to act now. This is going to cost the city more money than I think you know. Please refer to the cleanup that happened up there and what the final cost was. In the words of our own police department and the lieutenant in charge of the homeless outreach and code enforcement, "Our riverbed is a haven and shelter for ex-cons, criminals, drug addicts, and thieves. Our own code enforcement has told me firsthand, help is available if they want it, and they don't take it." This item on the agenda for a shelter is great, but please do not mistake this as a solution for the transient problem in the riverbed. There's many heads to the snake, and a homeless shelter is not the solution for that mindset. As much as I hate to say it, it's probably going to make the transient problem worse in Oceanside. I work right next to a soup kitchen in Orange County, and during the day, it pretty much resembles a refugee camp. Eight out of 10, and I've gone over these numbers before, and again, 15 years next to the Santa Ana River, I have a, I'm going to stick my neck out there and say, eight out of 10 people in our riverbed will not accept a shelter as an alternative to living in the riverbed. You need to get in the mindset of this demographic that I just mentioned, the drug addicts, thieves, and criminals. Our mission statement with the police department is to work with the community to build trust, provide quality service that actually prevents crime and reduces fear of crime and promotes safety. By them not enforcing any of the, any of the posted no camping and the code enforcement in the riverbed is blatantly turning your back on this. You can't give these individuals a choice. They're always going to choose the riverbed. This is their lifestyle, just like a person is addicted to drugs. It's going to be a sickening withdrawal to get off of drugs, whether you're addicted to drugs, addicted to living in a tent. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Nicholas Ziegler and Annie Olmstead.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the transient issue right now. Good evening, my name is Nicholas Ziegler, and I'm a resident of District 4 here in Oceanside. My house is only a few hundred yards from the riverbed, but my concern is for my mother-in-law, whose house in District 4 backs up onto the riverbed itself. Despite fencing and other security measures, she has still found transients on her property multiple times over the past few years. The area behind her house is dangerous. It's disgusting. It's not a nice place to take a walk, and it's not the kind of place you'd want to find yourself alone at, at night. Add to that, we also know that in 2007 and 2014, fires were intentionally set in the San Luis Rey Riverbed. As winter approaches and temperatures drop, will it take a massive fire in the riverbed for the city to finally wake up and address this emergency? The OPD has certainly tried to make some progress, 1,000 tickets so far this year, but the problem is getting worse every day. More resources and solutions are needed now. We know now that there are 500 people living down there at any time. It's a city down there, almost totally devoid of law enforcement. Drugs, prostitution, and theft are rampant. Women are being exploited down there. God knows if there are children down there. The situation is turning into the Santa Ana Riverbed 2.0. Do we really want to drag our feet for years and be held hostage to the tune of tens of millions of dollars to care for these people? There are long-term residents of Oceanside who are struggling and far more deserving of limited city resources. I call upon the city to declare a state of emergency and take immediate action to, number one, clear out all residents of the riverbed and provide them with out-of-town motel vouchers. Number two, the other cities are doing it to us, so we have no choice. Number two, close the riverbed for a period of four months to allow for cleanup and to assess the environmental damage to the riverbed, which no doubt is severe. And number three, install fencing and police patrols to make the area unwelcome for transients looking to set up camp. Look, obviously, it's going to be a legal battle and a legal struggle. The city needs to come to terms that you will be sued by the ACLU, you will have advocates attempting to stop this, but you got to do something now before the problem gets worse. There's already enough crime in Oceanside, and it's really time for the city government to step up and deal with the transient problem in the San Luis Rey Riverbed. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ann Olmstead, and I'm president of the League of Women Voters, North County, San Diego, Mayor Weiss, and members of the council. I am here tonight on behalf of the league to urge you to go ahead and sign, adopt the resolution of the emergency shelter. There is no question in our mind that the possibilities that are given to you with this grant, the flexibility that is built into the process, might lead to some alleviation of what is a truly terrible problem for the city. Thank you.
The next two speakers are David Grove and Drew Andrioff. And you may take either of the podiums.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, I've never done this before. New resident to Oceanside, glad to have moved here. I'm a 31-year survivor of AIDS, so clearly, I've had some hard times. Finding housing was one of them. I got lucky, got a place up here in Oceanside, Marisol Apartments, low-income housing, nice, felt safe. Unfortunately, things have been changing in the neighborhood. I'm sorry. The homeless community has increased. One of the neighbors, of course, my direct neighbor to me, was a homeless individual. He was put into that apartment, helped by Oceanside, and it is turned into more of a jump, I would have to say, into the point that it's causing mice and vermin to show up, other insects that we really don't want there. He's feeding the homeless out the back fence, so they're starting to gather in the alley. We're getting more furniture. It's starting to look like a furniture store, just really, really long. They are now coming into the property at all hours of the night. Some of the tenants are a little afraid. Of course, I would be too. They're not supposed to be there. And they're showing up in the laundry room, they're sleeping in the dumpsters out back. I lived in downtown San Diego, and I see exactly what the homeless population is doing downtown San Diego. The bleaching in the sidewalks, there's a reason for it. They have facilities, just don't want to use them. I watched a group of homeless run from the homeless outreach when I first moved to San Diego. I said, "What's the matter? Are they just harassing you?" Like, "No, they want to give us housing." I said, "Well, isn't that a good thing? They get you off the street. Wouldn't that be better?" "Well, no. They test us there." "What do you mean, they test you there?" "Oh, they test us there for drugs." "Oh, so we're not taking the housing because you can't get rid of the habit?" And that seems to be the problem. Throwing extra housing in, it's not fixing it. Look at San Diego. They're not exactly winning the war against the homeless. Actually, the homeless is taking over. I was attacked. The individual was let out after threatening my life repeatedly, did the other day, and I found out because he went to homeless court. So, clearly, his rights were more than mine, even though I'm an honest, boding citizen, not causing breaking laws, attacked outside my building. I think that they're underestimating the situation at hand, and maybe a reality check with, maybe a field trip to San Diego, 12th and Imperial, bear carrier gloves, maybe a taser, maybe some mace. It's gotten pretty bad. I just don't want to sit here in Oceanside. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. My name is Drew Andrioff. I'm a District 1 voter, and I'm the founder of Take Back Oceanside. I came here at the last council meeting with a presentation showing you what we are experiencing in the airport area and capistrano neighborhoods, and I couldn't do that this time because the images that have been sent to me are so disturbing that they're not allowed to be seen in the council chambers. Public defecation, public lootedy, public urination, public sexual acts happening right down here in view of kids right by our elementary schools, so it's bad there. What we see is pretty bad in the airport as well. We are here tonight because enough is not being accomplished. I know, I know we're all coming together, I know we're trying to get this done, but it's, we need to move forward with this. It's absolutely imperative that we clear out the persons living in the riverbed through whatever means necessary, and that the riverbed continues clearing brush and vegetation all the way to Interstate 5. For those who don't wind up in shelters this winter, they will continue dwelling in the area, and are forced to move forward with creating fires and whatnot to stay warm. The people we're trying to take care of is not the homeless. We're talking about habitual vagrants here, who are the drug addicts, who are the convicted felons, who can't live in normal society any longer. We need to step up enforcement, and we need to make it safe again for our neighborhood. I watch as people walk with cattle prods in my neighborhood because they're afraid of being attacked by homeless people. So, that's kind of where our neighborhood has gotten in the level of concern. I understand that the riverbed is federally jurisdictioned land, but no longer is inaction and acceptable reaction. Take Back Oceanside was formed to find issues to this problem, and we want to work with the city, not fight it. If we need to direct our efforts towards another source, then you need to let us know. Our group has tripled in membership since our previous council meeting. Now, we have 598 members since its inception on September 21st. We are currently in talks with several organizations and lifetime professionals in this field as we aim to tackle both short and long-term solutions to Oceanside's vagrant problem. This will not be something that's easy to do, but we, but it will become the far greater option for the city, our residents, Oceanside's tourists, as well as those who have found themselves living in these conditions for whatever reason. It would require leaders from both a local and state level, along with cooperation from the federal government as well. In the meantime, four things need to happen. One, clear the vegetation in the riverbed and clean up all the trash and debris left by the encampment before it all gets washed out to the ocean. Two, step up enforcement. It's time to look at all options for the vagrants who are habitual problems in Oceanside. We need to cite, ticket, arrest them for any crime or code violation, no matter how insignificant. If we propagate an absolute no-tolerance policy, these people will be less likely to stay around Oceanside. Three, it's be time to reassess the conditional use permits issued to the various food banks and soup kitchens, homeless services, et cetera, in the city. I understand this will be a hard option, but we can no longer enable vagrants in Oceanside. It's time to help those who want to be rehabilitated. It's time to help those who want to be rehabilitated, but those who are just abusing the system, it's time to cut them off.
Please wrap it up.
Four, the city needs to begin looking into rehoming program that can transport these persons back to their families if they are not local to our community. Thank you very much.
The next two speakers are Tina Paulson and Chris Mason.
Good evening. My name is Tina, and I'm the property manager at North Coast Terrace on North Whittle Street. I was born and grew up in the city of the beautiful Oceanside. As my father was a proud Marine stationed at Camp Pendleton, this is a city where I became homeless and active in my addiction for many years. I was a liability to my community and embarrassment to my family. I did whatever would help me feed my addiction with little regards to how it impacted others, including my children. Thank God I was introduced to Solutions for Change. Solutions for Change helped me turn my life around, take responsibility for my life and my actions. Solutions focuses on sobriety, work, and accountability. They empowered me to transform from one of those people you see running around Oceanside out of control, to not only being able to care for myself, but also my family. Today, I manage a brand-new 32-unit property worth millions of dollars, with about 100 families in Oceanside rebuilding their lives. God is so good today. I'm so thankful to work alongside with Solutions for Change, Chelsea Development, Hyatt Air Property Management, and the City of Oceanside and all the partners on this new beautiful project. It's been a lot of hard work, but the result is a significant increase in affordable housing in Oceanside. Real solutions for the city's homelessness, breaking the cycle of poverty and homelessness for families and their kids. I want to especially thank Deputy Mayor Chuck Lowry and council members Kern and Feller for their support and hard work in providing homes for their formerly homeless parents and their children. Thanks to you, these families have a safe, drug-free housing to support their empowerment and their futures. Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Chris Meggason. I'm the founder and CEO of Solutions for Change. As many of you know, we've been engaged in North County to solve family homelessness for nearly two decades. I'm here today not to ask you for anything, but to thank the council for its leadership on the homeless issue. Yes, you have been not only leaders for Oceanside, but this entire region. I'm here, in particular, there are three council members who, along with our former mayor, have been longtime and significant supporters of our efforts to lift families and children out of homelessness. In 2010, we embarked on a bold series of regional initiatives designed to create more access to the permanent solutions that families in deep poverty would need in order to exit dependency and get the education and employment needed to thrive and succeed. Since then, council members Chuck Lowry, Jack Feller, and Jerry Kern have consistently provided strong leadership, showing Oceanside and the entire region that they were willing to take on these tougher challenges and help the most vulnerable among us. Because of their leadership, other public and private stakeholders took note, and as a result, Solutions was able to expand our housing with our drug-free transformational model into every 78 corridor city. Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and Carlsbad, thereby quadrupling the number of families and kids we can lift out of homelessness, which now stands at 200 families. That's 600, thank you, that's 600 once-homeless kids and their parents who were stuck in the churn of dependency and despair, who are now on the comeback trail thanks to this city council with your leadership to help us get here. The place that you see right there, that's what you helped us build. Families who are homeless in your city are now safe and healthy and sober and working in this North Coast Terrace. Today, we are recognizing these champions were certificates of appreciation for their support of permanent solutions to homelessness and a promise to build capacity to end dependency. And I also, I have a few seconds left. I want to tell you that I am perhaps the only nonprofit executive homeless organization, executive of the state, that is so adamantly and strongly against HEAP. I do not agree with your housing director. I think it is a horrible mistake that you would adopt this thing and bring this in. This is a one-size-fits-all. It requires you to house active heroin and meth users in your housing. You cannot, you cannot have sober, drug-free housing. So it might work for some, but it's one-size-fits-all. That means you have no choice. You also cannot require workforce training. So we actually gave up all of our HUD and state money, $600,000 we gave back to them because we would not comply with these insane rules. And so I just hope that you realize, if you think it's bad now in the riverbed, it is going to be 10 times worse when you put out the message that you can come and live in beautiful Oceanside and use all these drugs in your housing. Thank you.
And the last three speakers are Donna McGinty, Mary Ellen Reese, and Sheila Kada.
Good evening, everyone. I think maybe I'll start paying rent down here. My concern in particular, I don't live on the river. I'm concerned about the kids and the families who have to deal with all of this. One of the things I've discovered that they're not real familiar with is the fact that if they call customer service in this city, and they tell them that they have contaminated issues on the sidewalk or in their neighborhood, and they can call the city, call customer service, they will send one of the contractors you already have online to come and clean it up. They come in with, they come in with the right equipment on, they come in with the right tools to clean this up and decontaminate an area so your children aren't put in danger, or you are not put in danger. Start using that service. From what I understand, there are three or four of them waiting for phone calls from the city. My other concern is particularly the contamination down there, and the contamination in downtown, the contamination on Loma Alta Creek, the contamination at the San Luis Rey River, and the beach at Buccaneer, anywhere that water is running off. Right now, anybody walking in there with shoes on is carrying contamination home with them. They're not properly dressed, they're not equipped to handle going in there for any reason, and it can endanger their own well-being. There are contaminants in that riverbed that are very, very serious. They are not being told the truth about what is going on in this city with these contaminants. Hep A, airborne tuberculosis, the beginnings of typhus in that area that's coming down in this area from Orange County, the MRSA staph infections. One of the things that I would advise you to do, rather than hire three new employees to carry the weight of all of this, put the money in a pot, hold one-day seminars once a week, one-day meetings once a week, invite all of the social services that want to help people, let the people who really need it sign up for social service help, one day a week. Anybody that shows up to eat can deal with military rations. No more Brother Binos. That is got to go. They have to go. They are cultivating what you are seeing. The services, the services that are available are good services, but if the people don't come and sign up, and you develop a list of who wants help, you're just feeding the masses, and they're going to continue to propagate and go into the canyons and tear apart our city like they have. Feed the ones and help the ones that need it. Put the other ones on a bus out of here.
Do I have to do anything with this stuff? Guess not. Council, mayor, thank you for the time. We all agree that this is a horrible situation, so I think Save Oceanside and League of Women Voters share an interest, and that is to have, take this money and use it for a shelter of some kind that's open year-round. For one thing, police cannot legally clean out camps if we have no place to send them. So it's foolish to sit there and say, "Well, just ignore lawsuits from ACLU, et cetera," because we can't afford to pay them if we lose. And this is California. We'll lose. So why not, I mean, even if it's just a tent city, and I don't, you know, certainly it could be separated from people with addiction issues and people who are just financially, temporarily homeless. But something can be done, but these people need to work together. We need to come up with solutions. Going over and over how hideous it is, we get it. I'd rather see the money go to a shelter instead of hiring new employees, because unless, I don't know how, you have to hire them, but if you do, won't that mean more expensive pensions that we can't afford? We already have plenty of unfunded retirements. So no more new employees, please. A shelter. Thank you.
Sheila Kada, 1092 Greenway Road, Oceanside. I just, the one thing that everybody says, and it seems like there's a lot of drug problems, if you have a lot with the homeless people, what you need to do is have compassion for people. Like I said last time, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Help people out of it. Putting them on a bus, sending them someplace else, that's like taking a sore and putting a band-aid on it and thinking you're going to heal the sore. It doesn't work. It's not good. We're supposed to be getting $18 million for San Diego County to deal with this homeless problem. We've already spent in Oceanside, I think they said $5 million. How much has Carlsbad spent? Put the resources together. Get the nonprofit groups, the people that are helping it. Put all this money together and have apartment complexes for these people, and hire people to deal with the drug problems. Putting people in prison because they have drug problems, it doesn't help, and it's more expensive than if you hire people that are knowledgeable about helping, you know, people with drug problems, taking care of, monitoring them. We can do this with compassion and care for our fellow man. It might be hard at first, but when you do things right, and it usually turns out better in the end. And by doing things right is by caring for people, going in there, you know, cleaning out the riverbeds. Yes, I don't want kids to, the people to suffer from what's happening in the riverbeds, and I want to protect our children, but we have to get together, and we have to do it in a way that it's good for everybody and care about everybody, and it's not by putting people on a bus, shipping them out, don't care about them. Have compassion, care for your fellow man. That's what I say.
Thank you. And of course, I'm going to support this resolution declaring the shelter crisis, and probably should have been done a while ago. I think the obvious thing that we're seeing here is a great disparity. It started off with a $500 million state grant to be made available to the entire state, and then when we found out that the county was going to be, you know, finding out what their proportion was going to be, we were all excited it was going to be $18.8 million, and we thought that we would be sharing in all of that, 18.9. I still didn't think that was a lot of money, but at least something that we can start with. And to find out that it's six or seven million dollars to be shared by 18 cities is, it's extremely, extremely discouraging. The mowing, I understand, is to, starts for the rivers between October, it started October 8th by Washborne Grove Management. It's going to take four weeks, and it's from Benet, Benet Road to College, and it's going to be 63 acres. I'm sure that's going to be helpful. But this is a habitat area which should be protected, and there should not be human beings in the riverbed. The bottom line here, and I think the county should be taking a much bigger role here, is that we need to do things at a regional level together. Any one city going, doing something first, and I agree with one of the speakers, if any one city goes and does something like a shelter, then everybody's going to go there. So everything has to be done at the same time with every city. So we do need something, we do need something like a blue ribbon committee that is made up of all the cities, especially the ones hardest hit, which includes, and they're at the top, and the county, and a state representative, to really find a real solution to this. That's what we need. We have, I think Oceanside has been doing its fair share. We have had, I want to say it's been, we've had 1,174 affordable units altogether in an 18-year period, plus, I personally helped Costa Serena to save their seniors' status, so that saved another 696 units for seniors, for to be able to have affordable housing. And then, for the rent control, the de-control, we were able to beat that back, because otherwise, those seniors and veterans would have been homeless, and that was 2,200 units. So altogether, we have been able to protect the homes and provide homes to, including homeless and veterans, to 4,070, 4,070 units. This past week, I attended the senior housing of program of Mission Cove, and so exciting that it was 138 units, just the senior portion of it. 20% reserved for homeless. 28 units opened up. We know we can do our fair share. What I feel very strongly about is not to take in any other cities homeless, to make sure that we deal with ours and our families and those who want help. One of the very, very touching stories that was presented at this dedication or ribbon-cutting was someone that actually, her and her husband had been homeless for two years. Were very successful, had a carpet business, and then the business, the building ended up being sold, and then the rents were just too high, which is kind of happening in Oceanside. The rents are becoming too high for some of our business, businesses that we've had for many, many years. And then they had health issues, and so that's when they became homeless. They were homeless for two years. She talked about how hard it is to be homeless and having to carry around eight gallons of water, and then she found out about Mission Cove applied, and she was so ecstatically happy. Those are the folks that we need to reach out to. Those are the folks that want to be helped. We have programs, I think District One has probably, probably has a huge concentration of services and housing. We've done our fair share, but we can, together with the county, we can, we can do this, we can resolve this, including doing the code enforcement and having our police ensure that if there are warrants to be served, that they ought to be served. I do want to ask staff, Marjorie, what is the difference between the models? We do not agree on models with respect to Mr. Meggason's program. What is the difference, and why did he just knock us down for all the other programs that we have? And why did he just knock us down for all the other programs that we have?
Well, first of all, I think that the city has supported, there is a full council that supported the North Coast Terrace Apartments being built on Whitesell Street. I believe that we had unanimous decision on that. Mr. Megason operates a wonderful program that I am very much supportive of and have been for, I don't know, 20 years or more. And his program has its merits. And he houses homeless families, and they go through a program that really tries to get at the root of the cause of their homelessness. And that is one model. The federal government has been focusing current funding towards what's called the Housing First Model. And the Housing First Model, it does create low barriers for homeless people to get into housing because it's been documented and proven that folks with addictions or other programs, that once they have a roof over their head with wraparound services available to them, are more likely to get on proper medication, to either earn income or get Social Security or disability benefits that are difficult for them to achieve when they're on the streets. The woman you referred to said it's like a full-time job being homeless, and it's hard to deal with all of these things. So when we have somebody that gets into housing, that has social services available to them, there is a high rate of success in them being able to maintain housing and to do well. But it is two distinct models. And I think what Mr. Megason said is that there is no one size that fits all, but this is one. And we take advantage of that model for dealing with our chronically homeless individuals. This really isn't a family program necessarily. And then we support programs like Solutions for Change with other funding that might be available.
Right. And I will correct the record. I supported and voted yes for that project, except for the last vote, which was I did not like that it did not have enough open space for the kids. I had understood that it included families. And I see the problems when you have too dense of a project, and then you end up creating even more problems. So that was my objection to that, to that design. I certainly had pushed it. In fact, I think, I feel I have been the leader and really pushed for housing. This is something that we, affordable housing, affordable housing.
I was a little shocked.
You know, I think that a person who's come from poverty, like my family did, and really worked hard with family members and extended family members through these kind of issues, many times what I'm hearing about are things that I have experienced through family, through friends, that I'm still in the community where I grew up, which is one of the poor neighborhoods in Oceanside, that I have a lot to give. And that is why I have worked so hard to make that happen against, I guess, some of my fellow colleagues here. But the bottom line is, we all ended up doing it together, regardless of, you know, how the votes ended up. And what we have to do, and this is not just make promises, but we have to make this happen. We need to get the county involved at a much higher level. I understand the county is looking at places to do a shelter, and we ought to be part of that discussion as a city. So this is a beginning in terms of getting at a different level. We have been working on this for the last, in terms of providing affordable housing, including homeless, for the last 18 years. This has gotten worse in the last two years. I have heard people who work in Orange County take the MetroLink, see homeless, having vouchers from Orange County, taking the MetroLink, it's a one-way, and they get off at Oceanside. This is how they're getting to us. It's, it's, it's Orange County cities not doing their fair share. We need to insist that every city do their own fair share, that we then can do this together at the same time in a coordinated fashion so that we don't end up with more people than we can handle. It is a question of money. It's, it's a question of addressing socioeconomic criteria and conditions of people. But we do have families, we do help them, longtime Oceanside families. And like I said, I support this. And I do believe, I know I am committed to making sure that we resolve this for all of our communities, especially the communities along the San Luis Rey River. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
That's motion to approve.
So I was elected four years ago to do this job here, and the job started off right away learning that we have organizations in the city of Oceanside who deal with homelessness and drug addiction and a lot of other issues. One of the things that's going on right now is that proposal tonight is to open a temporary winter emergency shelter. So I took a look at that just a few days ago this week. Bread of Life is, already has, it's a very Spartan two-room operation, 20 beds, bunk beds in one room, restrooms, that's it. And then 20 beds in the other one there, right next to each other. These are emergency operations for people who have to apply and be screened. They're not just welcome to walk in there and stay there. So this is a service for people who are not using drugs, who are not using alcohol. They have to have their, a real way of taking care of themselves initially, at least in place. So we are not going to pay for people to come in there and exploit the system. They get a meal a day, and that's all they get. And they are routinely tested if they stay there. But in addition to that, it is operating, we're just funding it for five months, but they are proposing to operate it for the entire year if we, as a city, choose to let them do that. And it takes some money, but not very much, because they're already invested in the building, they've already got money into the facilities, and they have an all-volunteer staff. So they're willing to open it year-round if the city wants them to do that. Meanwhile, we're arguing about who said yes or no to housing, and that's all public record. We don't need to discuss that. We currently have zero shelters in the city of Oceanside, so that's why this is called an emergency shelter. It's going to be the only one that we have. But we have other programs, like we mentioned earlier, the, the one that Solutions for Change is doing right up the street here. And that one is a critical year-round housing for up to four or five family members and individuals who are part of the Solutions for Change Rehab Program, which is not simply, again, just housing. It's a full-blown training program that takes something like 14 or 15 months to do that. And they reorient the people how to say yes or no, to making smart decisions, how to grow food. That's one of their projects in Vista is the Solutions Farm. These are really interesting programs that are very vital to our community. It's not simply a matter of putting together bags of day-old bread and having people come and take those, although they do that also. But you have to be qualified to get those. We absolutely should expand the HOT Team. That's the homeless outreach team, part of the Oceanside Police Department. They are the first line of defense to get the people out of the river. And if we expand their operations, then they will be going in there all the time, instead of just going in three or four days a week, which I believe is what they're doing right now. I'm not sure exactly that number. So we hope that we can continue to be very careful about who we provide services to. We don't want to just make this some kind of honeypot for people to come hang out here and take advantage of us. I, as an individual, council member, am committed to continuing the work that I've been doing for the past four years. I have not been doing it prior to that. I have been an activist in the community, very involved with what's going on here. But now it's a full-time job that I get paid 20 hours a week for. So that's just what, that's what it is. If we receive the funds we're talking about on this item, we shouldn't sit on the money until the exact perfect right solution comes along. We need to work right now to get to the goals that we need of helping people get off the streets, out of the river, and into housing. Even if it's minimal housing, it's better than having to live under a bush. I met with one of the company that is, they bought the completely derelict seven-apartment building up on Grant Street, and they are fully rehabbing that. These are not going to be affordable units, but they're much lower priced than what we have right now in the area, in the neighborhood. They proposed to build 300 affordable units as a new project. These would be 300 brand-new affordable units that are not going to force the city into debt. We don't have to wait 20 years to get the money together. They're willing to get that kind of project started. I don't know where they're going to locate that. That is not up to us. But they have to fill what the codes require us to do. They can do that. They want to build. They have the money to move it forward. I hope they do that. And that's the kind of welcome that we, as a community, need to give to provide more housing for people who need it. Last night, there was a candidate forum down the street at St. Mary's School, and I met a young man there who said he just bought a townhouse or whatever at the Tides Apartments, which are new project, not yet completely built, right off Oceanside Boulevard at Vine. And he just got out of the Navy. His family lives here in Oceanside. He can't afford a house because all the houses are about $900,000. So he bought a place that was about $675,000. That's still pretty high, but that's new housing in a pretty good neighborhood that's just a few yards from the freeway. Compare that to the Solutions for Change project, which is right up here on Wetzel Street. They are right up against the freeway. Quadruple-pane glass windows because the noise is so intense, yet people are willing to live there. They have way more applications than they can accommodate. We, as a neighborhood, a member of our community, we have to allow people to come in here who need housing, and we have to be very strict on what it is we let them do here, whether they are the builder or the resident. So I'm going to approve this, and I believe that this is not going to be an end-all or solution or a cure-all or a panacea. We're not going to fix anything that we do by making this decision tonight, but we are making decisions to continue to move issues forward and not ignore things, which I think is what has been done for the past many years at the city council. So I appreciate that all of you came tonight and made your concise statements. I took a bunch of notes, and these were all varied statements. It wasn't just the same get-out-of-town thing that we often think about. And I have had multiple meetings with the police, with the fire department, with all the nonprofits. We can do a lot more than what we're doing in the city, and I propose that we continue to do that and that we accept this money. And I'm going to accept the motion, second the motion. Thank you.
Councilman McKernan.
Thank you. People have a selective memory during election time, as it seems. I have, if you really think about this, $6 million in the city of San Diego as part of the 18-city consortium, there's a lot of sound and fury in this room tonight, and if we get 50 grand out of this, I'll be extremely surprised. Because the city of San Diego is going to suck up most of the money anyway. But we, that doesn't really address our problem. We really have to work on it ourselves. This is not something from the outside and that we're going to have to depend on grant money in order to fund some program. I completely agree with Chris. You know, I'm not really for this program, but I'm going to support it. But Chris is absolutely right. You know, this one-size-fits-all doesn't work. I come from education. I'm a retired school teacher, and I've seen this in education. Everybody's looking for that magic bullet, the next greatest thing that comes along, and everybody runs to it like a herd of cattle. And then till something else comes up, and they run back the other way because something else came up. I think the Housing First is one of those programs. In three to four years, you will see a different program come up, and Housing First is going to be dropped by the wayside. That doesn't solve our problem, though. The idea that we've been working on this for a long time, and I'm glad Chief McCoy is here, because with Chief McCoy and Main Street Oceanside, it's been, what, five years, six years when we brought the HOT Team on? As a result, as a response to Main Street Oceanside, there was an influx of homelessness downtown. They were at a loss how to deal with it. The police department jumped in, they did a survey, they figured out how we can do this, and the chief brought forward a HOT Team concept. And I think it's working. I don't know, they've got an award today for it, and other cities are going to try to model it. I really don't know how you define success with HOT Team. I don't know what the metrics are. I just know personally, seeing them in action and driving around and seeing them make contact with these people and try to get them out. The idea, yeah, do we need another HOT Team? Yes. But the city is restricted, the amount of funding we can put towards these things. We don't have unlimited funds. We have other things that we have to do. So we all need your help. The idea, you know, this whole idea that, oh, we're going to have the police just round them all up and send them home and things like that, we'll be spending more money in attorney's fees versus actually putting money towards solving the problem. So let's work on solving the problem globally. You know, the idea of what city of Oceanside can do and how we can do it, but the idea that because the courts are not in our favor, the Martin versus Boise decision is devastating to cities. And I've been reading how other cities are handling it. The city of Chico last night approved a program that they limited the hours that people can be on side, you can't block sidewalks between 7:00 in the morning and 11:00 at night. It kind of walks around the Boise decision because Boise was a 24/7 ban. So we're all looking at different solutions of how to do this, and other cities are going to have to do this. We are not alone here. You know, the idea that every coastal city, and obviously the Orange County issue, so the idea that we're going to have to be looking at what other people are doing, how they do it. You know, obviously Brother Benno's is a problem. If it was up to me, I would change their conditional use permit to make three-time, three full-time security guards, and nobody could take food off-site. They come, they eat, and they leave, and they can't take food with them. So the idea that, you know, the idea that there is a certain amount of compassion here. We have to help these people. But the idea that we need to redo this whole program of how we're doing it, because I think we do more than our share than the other cities in Oceanside. I think the person that said her tonight about the other cities picking up the load, I think that's true. And so I think, you know, I know that Brother Benno's is coming back for review of their conditional use permit. I don't know when that comes to Planning Commission, but if it, I may not be on the council when the CUP comes back, because I only have five more meetings. And I, no applause, please. The idea, the idea is that, you know, that would be my recommendation, that we really start reining them in, serve people that need it, don't let them take food off-site, and make sure that they come, they get their services, and they leave, and they don't hang around. So, thank you.
Councilman McFeller.
Thank you. I'll be as brief as I can. The homeless problem in the river is, I've crawled on my hands and knees through that early on in my career. As a council member, when that river was completed after the flood in '93, that river bottom was slick as, slick as our beaches. Wasn't a tree in sight. But the, God bless them, the environmentalists made us replant the river. So thus, we still have trees. And we didn't have the homeless problem then, but it is an area that I know the city managers heard every word you say. I know the police chiefs heard every word you say. And for the ones that want it, we have the great service of Bread of Life. I've did a tour there. They have compassion, but they are no nonsense. They are definitely going to turn people around that want it. The services that we've created with Community Housing Works and Chelsea, those are some great projects for those people that want it and need it. And the enforcement, I'm sure somehow, some way is going to come. So with every effort that I can put forward, I will promise to help make this, to take back Oceanside. I mean, we, we see it every day, all day, and I, the ones that, well, we definitely need to pray for a lot of people that don't want help. So I'm supporting this because every little bit helps. One size doesn't fit all. One size doesn't fit all.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Can I correct something? Thought I had my light on.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to correct something here. We heard about Crown Heights, and, and I have been involved with affordable housing even before I was on the council, and, and the 2,200, that was done not as a council member, the 696, not as a council member. But as to Crown Heights, we have for years tried to buy one of those buildings, to convert it to affordable housing. Those, those housing units in Crown Heights are not affordable units. They are not. Their market rate, which is why we have so many people living in each one. So the way to do this, to approach and ensure that we have a better chance of moving away from having homeless, having people who are unable to pay for their housing, is to do, is to have the affordable housing programs. I've seen so many people transition into having, you know, changing their lives. So we need to ensure that we divide those, we, we reach out to those that, who are able, that we are able to help, and the others, we have to deal very aggressively. That's what I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We are past 6 o'clock, so we're going to move on to our public hearing items, and we're going to start with 17, which is a development plan and coastal permit for 601 North Pacific Street. And we will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I've visited the site, I've had a meeting with the, the owner, and, and talked with staff.
Staff, I also went by the site.
Staff and I've been by the site.
No public.
I, I met with the applicant, I, I walk by every Sunday morning with a cigar by the site, so I, I've actually been by that. So let's wait a couple minutes.
Let's take five minutes. Peter.
All right, we, we will, we will take a five-minute break.